Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 9th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Kincaid will lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All right, now we'll move on to the Real Club members. Matt Pirkala, roll, please.
Councilman Kincaid.
Present.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Edwards.
Here.
Councilman Robertson.
Here.
Councilman Copeland is absent. Councilman Wheat is absent. Councilwoman Messenger.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from a previous meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
We have motion approved, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mike and Caleb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. First up, we have a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, so I do want to read that for everyone. Whereas April was first declared Child Abuse Prevention Month by presidential proclamation in 1983, and whereas child abuse causes unspeakable pain and suffering to our most vulnerable citizens, and whereas an estimated 674,000 children were victims of abuse and neglect in 2017, the most recent year there is for national data, and whereas abusive head trauma, known as shaken baby syndrome, is recognized as the leading cause of death of physically abused children, and whereas most child abuse results as a result from situations that are preventable when community programs and systems are engaged and supportive, and whereas recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month can be an opportunity to help create strong communities to support families and keep children safe. Now therefore, I, Matt Gentry, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, Indiana, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Lebanon and invite all citizens to duly note this occasion. In honor of that, we do have Cassie Fraser seats with us tonight to talk about the Sylvia's Center and to kind of speak a little bit about that for the community.
Good evening. My name is Cassie Fraser. I am the Executive Director of Sylvia's Child Advocacy Center. My team and I assist in the criminal investigation of crimes against children. Last year, we investigated 154 crimes in Boone County. Since we have started in 2010, we have assisted in about 1,500 alleged child abuse cases. Most of those cases are sexual abuse cases, however, we are seeing increase in physical abuse and witness to violence. We look at child abuse as a three-tier program. We want to prevent it, we want to intercede when it happens, and we want to give them aftercare if it does happen. For our prevention programs in the last two years, we went from teaching about 2,500 children in Boone County about safety, what is okay and what is not okay to be an adult to do to you. However, in 2018, the legislature passed a law that allowed us to get into the schools K through 12, so now we serve 12,500 kids in Boone County with the prevention programs. That's the elementary school is child lures, the high school is called teen lures. I'm very happy that in Boone County, all three school districts have agreed to allow us to help them with that, so we are able to go into the schools and teach the children about, basically, it's like the good touch, bad touch. We also do, like I said, the crimes against children, we investigate those crimes. I'm happy to report that from 2015 to 2017, our numbers look like about 61 people have been convicted of crimes against children in our county. We work together very well as a team, and that includes all of our Lebanon detectives, and I'm very happy to report our numbers.
Thank you, Cassie. I believe you guys have an event coming up soon.
We do, thank you. And April 14th, we will have what is called our first family's breakfast, and it is actually hosted by Mrs. Gentry and Emily Strom of Zionsville, the new mayor. It will feature Andrew Campbell, who is a researcher out of Indianapolis, and he has done a lot of work with our animal control officer, to find and to display for you a heat map that shows where their calls to service for animal controls are overlapping with their calls to service for domestic violence and child abuse. So it is basically the same place that these calls are coming to, and we are trying to show where abuse does not happen in a silo, and that sometimes in situations where if we get a call for an animal being abused or an animal being neglected, when we get into the home, we also find children are in that home as well. And so it's another avenue for us to reach out and help and try to prevent these things from happening.
Great. Any questions for Cassie?
That's just an interesting fact. I would have never thought about that, you know, it's very interesting.
It is very interesting, yes. And anything, any tool we can use to prevent or to help children, we will use.
Yeah.
Well, I have obviously learned a lot about what you guys do there through my wife's involvement, and I appreciate everything you do. I know it's a tough job and not something that is, you know, but obviously, when it's in the papers, it becomes top of mind, right? So hopefully, it's not something, you guys are doing a lot of great work to hopefully nip it in the bud, catch it early, and also protect the children, which is at the end of the day, your main goal. So appreciate everything you guys do, and we'll send out an email reminder to everybody for that event as well, too, so take your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we'll move on to old business. First item up is ordinance 2020-04, which is adoption of updated city standards, and this is on second reading. There are some changes that we did make, though, so Kevin will kind of talk about those changes.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for your time this evening. Ordinance 2020-04 is a, is a, is an ordinance that will adopt the city, the city standards, or the city construction standard details, you might say, but, but, you know, from a cover page standpoint, from a branding and labeling standpoint, we refer to these as the City of Lebanon standards. So this was, previously, this was approved by the Board of Works on February 10th. We brought this to you to be adopted via ordinance, so it would have the force of law behind it. At your last meeting, we read this on first reading, there were some comments, some very valid comments, actually, that we have addressed. Those were primarily pertaining to the road cross-sections, so on our secondary arterial and commercial and residential collector street, we did not depict the trail location on those cross-sections. It was depicted in trail details further into the, into the documents, but it really should have also been included on those standard street cross-sections. So we've added the 10-foot multi-use trail onto one side of those cross-sections, and then we've also denoted on there that the streets for those commercial collectors are wide enough that we can put a breakdown aisle on one side of the street, but we noted in the general notes associated with that detail that the breakdown aisle would only have to be constructed on one side of the street, and that should be coordinated with the City of Lebanon. So those are the only changes. Those changes went back to Board of Works earlier tonight to essentially be ratified, that they support those changes, and they did vote unanimously to approve those. So what we're here for tonight is to read this on second reading. I would note that under Section 3 of the ordinance, we would need to revise that so that it reads, Lebanon Standards 4, as approved by the City of Lebanon through its Board of Public Works and Safety on February 10th, 2020, needs to be changed so that it reads, approved on March 9th, 2020. Other than that, happy to answer any questions you might have. There are no further comments or revisions or any additions to those standards.
Any questions for Kevin?
No, sir.
Okay. Any, I'll have Rob read the ordinance on second reading.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2020-04, again, is an amending ordinance from 95-07, amending the Lebanon standards. Ordinance of the City of Lebanon, the City of Lebanon through its Board of Public Works and Safety established and adopted standards for the design and construction of public and private infrastructure, and it includes a number of things, including the streets, utility drives, storm sewers, water mains, sewer mains, service laterals, lift stations, casting, erosion controls, and trails to be built in the City of Lebanon. The Lebanon Utility Service Board established certain standards and adopted standards for the design and construction of the public and private infrastructure, which also includes streets, utilities, drives, storm sewers, water mains, and service laterals, and some additional matters that are all set in there, and this ordinance will incorporate all these recitals by reference. The Lebanon Standards, as approved by the Lebanon Utility Service Board on February 2020, copies of which are on file at the Office of the Lebanon Utilities are hereby approved and adopted herein. The Lebanon Standards, as approved by the City of Lebanon through its Board of Public Works and Safety on March 9th, 2020, copies of which are on file at the Office of the City Engineer are hereby approved and adopted herein. And again, the Lebanon Standards, as approved by the Lebanon Utility Service Board, February 5th, 2020, and through the Board of Works of Public Safety, which was, again, amended on March 9th, 2020, are identical and hereafter referred to as Lebanon standards. These are standards, these Lebanon standards will be made available to developers, engineers, land surveyors, the City of Lebanon Planning Department, the City of Lebanon Engineering Department, Lebanon Utilities personnel and employees, as necessary for any design and constructions of the streets, utilities, drives, storm sewers, water mains, service laterals, sanitary sewer mains, and service laterals, lift stations, castings, erosion control, and trails to be built within the City of Lebanon. And then all prior ordinances that would be inconsistent with any provisions of this ordinance are then hereby repealed, and if any provision of this ordinance would be declared to be invalid, then by accord, such decisions shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Any discussion from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment? Would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2020-04 as amended?
I'll make a motion, and we approve ordinance 2020-04 as amended the updated city standards here on second reading.
Okay, we have motion approved, is our second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that ordinance is adopted unanimously, thank you, council. Next up is ordinance 2020-05, amendment to Chapter 77, parking schedules concerning the creation of no parking area on the north side of Williams Street, 70 feet west of Meridian Street, and this is also from Kevin.
Yes, this ordinance is back before you, 2020-05. There are no revisions or amendments since read on first reading. Again, it was just mentioned, but this is just to create a no parking zone on the north side of Williams Street from a residential driveway that exists approximately 70 feet west of Meridian Street to Meridian Street. So it's, this is a result of requests from law enforcement for some continual enforcement issues there, and after reviewing that with them, we feel as though this is the best way to resolve some of those enforcement issues, is just to make that area a no parking zone and eliminate some of the confusion and discrepancies there.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin?
No, sir.
Any comment from council?
No.
Any public comment? Okay. Would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2020-05.
Make a motion, we pass ordinance 2020-05.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that ordinance is adopted unanimously, thank you, council. All right, that concludes why I have our old business. Anything from council?
Not for me.
Okay. Next up, on new business, is Resolution 2020-03 regarding Lebanon Utility Payment in Lieu of Taxes, also known as pilot. Before we start the discussion on this, I'm going to have Rob read the resolution to set the stage.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is Resolution 2020-03 regarding payment in lieu of taxes. The City of Lebanon owns and operates through its Utility Service Board a municipal utility known as Lebanon Utilities. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the utility must calculate and collect an amount sufficient to compensate the city for taxes that would be due on real property owned by the utility as if the property were privately owned, and this is the payment in lieu of taxes or pilot. The city may elect to transfer collective pilot funds from the utility to the Municipal General Fund. On December of 2010, the Common Council for the City of Lebanon elected to collect the entire pilot from the rates and charges of the utility by passing Resolution 20-10-07, and I'll just summarize it, which says that the city elects to transfer to the city's general fund a payment in lieu of taxes from the rates and charges of Lebanon Utilities in an amount sufficient to compensate the city for taxes that would be due the city on property owned by Lebanon Utility as if the property were privately owned. Since December of 2010, the fiscal standing of the city has improved, including tax changes, which have modified the real property taxes collected to the city. The utility requires regular maintenance and improvement to the infrastructure of its various systems, and the utility board projects capital expenditures for the utility in the coming years that will necessitate rate increases for its service. And whereas this pilot fund provides a flexible means to balance the budgetary needs of the utility and the city on an annual basis. Whereas the utility board has suggested that the city modify its Resolution 2010-07 to permit annual flexibility in the amount of the pilot collected from the utility during the city budgetary process with its adoption of Utility Board Resolution 2019-02. So now therefore, be it resolved and adopted by this council, that would be, that would state as follows, that the city hereby elects to transfer to the city's general fund a payment in lieu of taxes from Lebanon Utilities in an amount up to the taxes that would be due from the city on the property owned by Lebanon Utilities as if the property were privately owned. The amount of the pilot collected from the utility shall be reviewed and determined by the city on an annual basis after presentation from the utility during the city's budget work sessions, which shall include projected capital improvement projects to the utility infrastructure and any relevant programs. The Common Council reserves the full authority to accept or allocate pilot revenues as it deems appropriate and lawful.
Thank you, Rob. The reason for this resolution is, you know, in talking with the utility board, and I know this predates me, but what happens right now, essentially, the utilities writes us a monthly check, essentially, in pilot payments, and that essentially is deposited into our general fund. So what this resolution does differently than what is before, just to clarify, it does not waive any pilot payments, it does not reduce the pilot, it doesn't do anything other than it gives the council the ability to review how those pilots' payments are used. Essentially, if we want them to be deposited directly into our general fund, which just continues to build every year, our cash balance in there, or if we choose to divert those payments to another initiative or another program. So essentially, you know, again, right now, it's deposited directly into our fund, and it gets kind of essentially into the black hole of our general fund, right? So if we ever wanted to spend those funds, they're intermingled with other city revenues, we have to do additional appropriation for that, et cetera, et cetera. So what this enabling resolution does, and it doesn't necessarily say we even have to do it, it's just giving the council another, more authority to use those funds in other ways if you deem fit. So essentially, it's giving you additional flexibility, another tool in your toolbox to make city improvements. It's not something that, this is not the, there's no programs attached to this, there's no proposals with this, strictly, it's just a creation of a tool that if you guys choose to use in the future, you could do so. So that's really why we wanted to bring the resolution to you, and I'm open to any discussion you want to have on it. And like I said, I know this is, I wanted to bring this up earlier in the year, but we had some longer meetings, so we kind of pushed this back. So if we're not ready to take a vote on this tonight, I understand, but I did want to start having this discussion about that, so. Any discussion? I know, Dick, you had some thoughts you may want to share, but...
Yeah, just a few things I want to share. First of all, the resolution is, really seems to be okay in the way it's stated, but I'm not real sure really whether we need it or not, but something we have to keep in mind is that the revenue that comes from utilities and pilot, okay, is actually figured into our budget every year. That's miscellaneous revenue that comes in, that's added to our revenue, to our budget, so that money's always included in our budget. Yes, we have a reserve in our, somewhat of a reserve in our general fund. I'm looking at Mia because she, when I call her to ask her if there's any money there, she's always, well, okay.
It's about 6.5 the last week.
Yeah, there's, there's some money in reserve in our general fund, okay? But just do remember that that money that does come in is actually figured in as miscellaneous revenue in our budget every year, okay? So my thoughts are that if there was any projects or anything, well, let's just, if there was anything that wanted to happen this year, I'll say, it would have to be an additional appropriation to our budget to do something. Now, as we, as this is stated here, the utilities could come to us at budget time. I think they could probably come to us at budget time anyway, and talk to us about pilot, talk to us about how the use of those funds could, could help the utilities in any manner, any, any program or whatever that they have. So I, you know, I don't, that's why I don't know that we really need the resolution, because I think they could come and speak to us anyway. I don't know that this really hurts anything, okay?
It sounds like, it sounds like to me it's just a bookkeeping change.
Yeah, it's, it's a...
Whether you can draw the money out without having a meeting and have an appropriation to do it, you can just say, switch it.
Well, the utilities would have to come to us with a, with a, some sort of program, which I don't see a problem with that at all at budget time. They should be able to come to us and talk to us about, hey, we got this, and we would have the opportunity to say, yea, nay, or hay, and approve some or not some, or all, or whatever at that time. At budget time, and I sent all, everyone an email last night, I don't know whether everybody read it or not, but as our community grows, okay, our numbers should go up a little bit as far as revenue goes. May be a point in time where maybe we don't need pilot because of our revenue growth. I don't know. If that happens, that might be a possibility where we wouldn't need that, and we could, we could figure that out at budget time next year, when we're figuring what our revenue is, how it's going to pertain to the budget, and then decide at that time, what do we need?
Well, first of all, I want to clarify, I'm not proposing eliminating pilot. I think frankly, I think pilot is a fair application of the law. I think it's something that, yes, it is a city on utilities, but if it was private utilities, they would be paying that same pilot. So, I mean, short of significant hardship on behalf of the utilities, I'm not in favor of eliminating the pilot. And I, I would disagree slightly in saying that this, we don't need this, because right now, what happens is these pilot payments are paid to the city and they get put in the general fund. From a, from my perspective, and just from a, you know, borrow from Ghostbusters, not cross the streams, so to speak, I think we would benefit from, from essentially keeping an individual record of those pilot collections and using them in ways that benefit the city. Now, those ways that benefit the city are up to the fiscal body, the council, to determine those, and if the best way to spend those is just to keep those in a pilot reserve that are unrestricted funds that you guys can do with what you wish, then that's your decision. But I, but right now, because they just go directly into the general fund, you know, our balance just keeps on building. So the concept behind this resolution is to give you guys another tool, you know, I sent out, you know, asked you guys for feedback of things you guys wanted to accomplish over the next four years or so, and you guys all had different ideas, right? So when we're talking about funding sources for projects, you know, obviously, we go, we go to the food and beverage a lot, we go, you know, we try not to go to a rainy day, but general fund, obviously, this could be another fund that if you guys want to do something to benefit the city, especially if it ties in with somehow improving our utility system, I think would make a lot of sense. So that's the idea behind the resolution. Like I said, it's nothing, it's not changing the amount they pay, it's not changing, it's not saying we're going to spend the funds on this project, it is just giving you guys another tool to say, if we want to do something in the future, we can without it coming out of general fund. That's, that's the concept.
Well, I might, I might add, just to, for everyone, the mayor and I have had some good conversations back and forth, and there's merits to both sides.
Yes.
Okay? One of my thoughts also is that it's kind of always been a kind of a trade-off between this and what we pay the utilities for water and electric fees, and it's been kind of like the trade-off, we get this back, and, and then we pay them. Yeah, we're trading them back and forth, but it's like, we're okay, we're even, almost, and those numbers are going to go up in the future, so, but we just have to remember that, that, and I think our revenue, as the city grows, should grow, okay? And it did this year quite well, and we've done well to keep things on a steady stream, and I picture that'll be the same, same focus next year, or this year of budget time, for next year. And it's something we do have to realize, that if the day ever comes that we start taking, would take and use that money out and not as miscellaneous revenue, then if something happened, we didn't gain income, we'd be reaching into our reserves to balance our budget to where we'd want it, possibly. We don't know that, okay? That could happen, that could happen.
So Dick, just to, if I may, recap, if this resolution is passed, we have the opportunity to redirect it into a separate account, potentially going multiple years, building up a sizable savings, and then the utilities comes and says, hey, we'd like to partner on a significant project, that benefits everybody, we have the capital to take, help or completely pay for it in full through those savings, and in future budget processes, we know that we're not going to have a trade-off like what Dick was talking about, almost dollar to dollar for utilities. However, but we're leveraging those new savings back towards utility projects, which is increasing that pilot amount essentially, because it's taxes on property that they own that we help them build. So I kind of see it as a wash. Am I, am I understanding that right, Dick and Mayor Gentry?
Yeah, the thing you have to keep in mind is that, is that the city needs to maintain a certain amount of reserve, okay? Because we don't get funding, we receive X amount of dollars every month, a little bit, but we never receive enough until it comes tax time. a little bit, but we never receive enough until it comes tax time. So you're getting tax money in July, getting tax money in December.
Correct.
And so July is paying everything that you've already gotten, and that's why you've got to keep that reserve for that first six months.
Sure.
So you've got to have that much money in reserve, at least, to handle that much half of your budget, uh, to make sure you got that. So, yeah, I, yeah, I could see, I could, I could possibly see as things would grow, that maybe if we had, uh, if we didn't need to use this money in the budget process, that we could take it and put it in its own separate fund like we have food and beverage, let's say, and then, uh, put that, you know, and that's, that's for the council's approval to, to spend as they see fit, okay? Um, but I could see that that may not be the full amount the first year.
Correct.
It may be a partial, the next year it may be the full amount. I could see it, something that would probably build up in time, uh, that could be a, a very good source of, of rep, you just, we just don't know.
Yeah, well, and, and I think something to clarify to you is that, so, UMBLA recommends about 35% cash reserves for a city. We're about 48%, and I believe we are going higher with that. Now, granted, we have some costs, you know, that we're talking about, you know, reducing that a little bit, um, but we're in a very strong financial position, right? So, um, now, if we create a separate pilot fund, um, that essentially becomes a, I forget what the term, uh, DLGF uses, but it's a, um, an unrestricted fund, so very similar to the food and...
A what?
So it's a non-reverting unrestricted fund, right?
So it's not part of the, the cash reserves?
Correct, yeah.
So you, you can still keep that money over here, but not really show it in the cash reserves, which is...
Which, which, yeah, so if we, you know, if we have a big project we're trying to do, um, you know, we could do it out of the pilot fund versus doing it out of, out of the general fund, which requires an additional appropriation, 10 days, 10 days' notice, all of that, right? It becomes a little bit more flexible, um, for the council to use those funds, you know, if they save up, or, again, again, like I said, I want to clarify, it is all what you guys decide to do on an annual basis, right? So none of this is about eliminating pilot, it also, it just gives you another tool for flexibility standpoint.
I also want to say to you though, pilot did not come into this city until 2010. And 2010 is when this city was broke, absolutely broke. So what I'm saying to you, it didn't come out of nowhere, it's because we didn't, couldn't raise enough tax money with our assessed valuation, and that was when the stock market and everything else went south. And after what I'm seeing this week, it's going south again. So I'm saying to you, we, we, it's a, it's a, it's like I said, it's even Steven coming in what we pay them and what they pay us. I mean, for what the bills that we pay.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't see anybody winning from it, but that's also how we balance our budget. It doesn't go into the general fund directly. It goes into our, part of our, uh, 10 or 12 million dollar budget for the city every year. So if, if we decide to give it all away, say it's 500,000 or whatever it is, we've got to find 500,000 come out of another fund.
But no one's talking about giving it away though, Keith. That's not, that's not what this resolution does, it doesn't eliminate pilot, so...
But if we take it out of our general fund right now, we have to find it someplace to replace that money. And that only comes out of another quote-unquote savings account somewhere, and if you don't put money back into it, it's, it's a short time when you don't have any left in there.
Well, the savings account would be the money we collect from pilot.
Yeah.
It's just in a different little category.
Yeah, but it, it, till it runs out, and when it runs out again, like it did in eight, nine, then you're in the same boat we were in then.
No, we still have the same money.
You know, you...
We still have the same money, it's just in a different bucket. If you need the money, you just pour it in the big bucket.
And we could do that today too, if we wanted to.
Yeah, but this way, it separates the buckets, which makes it more flexible.
And makes it, and makes it easier and taunting to other councils and other mayors down the road to spend it.
Well, but that, that's then, and this is now.
You, you have to go from where you came from.
And it's okay now. Nothing changes.
Well, you can't go forward, you had to keep looking backwards.
There, there, there's nothing wrong with this, this doesn't dictate nothing, okay? Other than just gives us the option to, actually just gives us the option to, uh, to listen to the utilities if they got a, if they got a project. Yeah, if they got some little project or something, or whatever, needs some special funding or whatever, they have an option to come, that's, that's, they have their, they have the ability to come to talk to us. As, as it stands right now, they're, they could come and talk to us, but there's nothing really tells them that they could come to talk to us, if that makes any sense. But, uh, the main thing is, we have to balance our budget every year, okay? And that always, that'll always have to be done first before anything is an enacted, uh, any request or anything is acted on.
Well, we can balance the budget, you just take it out, you take, if you need a little extra, you take it out of this small bucket from the pilot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so nothing changes, it just gives you a little flexibility.
Well, and I think it's important too to remember where pilot comes from, right? I mean, citizens and ratepayers, generally speaking, are usually the same person, unless you live in Eulon, right, or you have telecom and you live outside city limits, right? So there's a lot of overlap on who, um, you know, whether it's in your property taxes or whether it's in your utility bills, right? There's some overlap there. Um, so, again, I think the, you know, the, the fact we have a pilot payment, um, I mean, it's still coming from our taxpayers, it's just coming in a different form in their utility payments, right? So, um, again, it's just a balancing act, and again, I, I understand Keith's point that it's, you know, what could future mayors do with this, what could future councils do with it? I mean, I think those are all discussions that those mayors and those councils have to have, but again, I think from a, from a, I like understanding where sources of revenue comes from, and then how it's being applied. And I think if we have a separate fund that's, we know is directly coming directly from utility pilot payments, um, I think what we do with that, whether we're saving it up for a project, or whether we're using it for some new program, I, I think that's valuable because we know the source it came from and how it's being used. Um, very similar to how we try to use food and beverage payments to improve the quality of life in our community. Um, I think understanding the origin and then the, where the destination for those funds, I think is valuable, and that's again, why, why I'm proposing it, so. Any further discussion?
Not for me.
Is there anything from you? No? Keith, Dick? Good. Any public comment? Uh, do we want to take a vote on this tonight, or do you want me to hold it?
I think it would be good to table it.
I'd like to see us wait, because we got two other members that aren't here.
Okay.
Uh, if, if others don't mind.
Agreed.
Uh, John's not here, Brett's not here, I'd like to see what their feelings are.
Fair enough.
Unfortunately, Brett's not due back till middle of April though.
I mean, there's nothing present.
No.
There's not, there's no timeline on...
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's, like I said, I, it's a...
So, you know, like, like they hear their two cents, what they think.
Yep.
If that's okay?
It's fair, absolutely. Okay, uh, motion, would entertain a motion to table Resolution 2020-003.
I'll make a motion, Lee, table 2020-003.
We have a motion to table in a second?
All right.
Resolution 2020-003 has been tabled. Uh, next up is a food and beverage request for the Lebanon bike park construction document, documentation preparation. Add a lot of issues there.
Easy for you to say.
Kevin, let me introduce that.
All right, thank you once again, and good evening, uh, mayor and, and council members. Um, I just want to talk to you again about, uh, a quality of life project and a food and beverage, uh, request that I want to make tonight that I think is appropriate, and uh, is without a doubt, I think, an excellent opportunity for us to create a unique, uh, project that will, will contribute to the quality of life of our, of our residents. Uh, at the last meeting, I gave you a very lengthy, um, update on where we were at with the bike park design, so I, I don't have a whole lot of, of updates for you beyond that. The only thing I would like to tell you is, you know, we've been heavily into, uh, sort of fundraising mode over the last few weeks, uh, and we've had some really good wins over the last, uh, few days. Uh, I can't get into a lot of specifics because these things are still pending, but I can tell you, we have roughly $260,000 of pending donations, pending corporate partnerships, uh, on the bike park, so. I, I, and I want to bring that up because I think it's important, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to show you that, that not only do we feel like there is an underlying community within, uh, Lebanon, within Boone County, uh, within the greater state of Indiana, that wants bike park amenities, wants mountain bike trails, will use those, uh, there's also an underlying support system at the corporate level, um, that wants to see these amenities developed in our communities, wants to support the development of those, and they're willing to put their money where their mouth is. So, um, I mentioned $260,000, one of those is, uh, a $250,000 pledge from one company. Again, I wish I could tell you more information, uh, but they do not want their name revealed at this time, but we hope that we will finalize that in the coming days and be able to make a, uh, an announcement. Uh, but, uh, again, very much, uh, a lot of support coming from the, the local community, the business community for this amenity. Um, so where we are now is, you know, previously, uh, we had a $31,200 contract before you for consideration for, uh, planning and engineering, construction, uh, document preparation for the bike park. Um, at this, at that time, this was back in December, you approved $7,280 towards that $31,200 contract for, um, the planning level exercises, uh, for that design contract, so...
What was that again?
Uh, the total originally was $31,200, and you approved $7,280, which were the planning level tasks associated with it. So what I'm here for...
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Kevin, you remember what we asked that to come from? What we were paying that from?
Uh, we appropriated that from existing budget line items, uh, for 2019 active living...
What you had left over.
Yes. It was the end of the year, we still had some active living money available, and so we approved that contract, encumbered those funds, and that's how we've been paying those bills up to now.
Okay.
So what I'm asking for is, is a food and beverage request tonight, uh, to complete the project. So there is still, uh, $23,920 left in, um, services associated with that original contract, but I, I also have, um, I've asked the contractor, the, the project has gotten a little more complex than we originally thought with some of the partnerships that we've been discussing with the National Interscholastic Cycling Association, and some other partnerships with local mountain bike advocacy groups, as well as, uh, some of the complexities that are leading into this idea of more corporate sponsorship associated with the park. Um, so there's, there's a lot more coordination on that front, coordination, uh, of the construction documents, coordination with NICA on, um, on their use of the facility, and so there is an additional $10,660 that the, um, the Bike Park Designer, Hill Ride Progression Development Group, LLC, that they've requested. So I'm essentially calling that change order one, associated with the design contract, which leads to a total, um, of, of unfunded design level services of $34,580. So that's what I'm asking to be appropriated from food and beverage tonight. Um, of course, you're the council, you're the fiscal body, if you felt, uh, a need to appropriate that from some other existing fund, uh, that's your purview, uh, but, but for the purposes of what we put on the agenda, this is a food and beverage request to fund the remaining, uh, portions of the design contracts for the bike park at $34,580.
Now, this will get us to the point of ready to bid, and then we'll have to come up with, uh, some more funds for construction, correct?
Right, this would be getting us all the way.
And, and, uh, supervision or inspection?
There, there, we, this would not include inspection, but this would include what we refer to in the industry as, um, as, um, construction administration services. So this would include site visits by the designer, review of shop drawings, review of submittals that are associated with the, the design specifications. So this would take all, this would take us all the way through construction from the designer's point of view. Uh, we would need to think about an inspection contract that would come down the road. Uh, again, I couldn't really tell you what that's going to look like, because this is not your typical construction.
Yeah.
In fact, maybe some, a lot of this is done in-house, once we hire, um, the position that we currently have open for a construction inspector.
Or have you got a, a preliminary cost now?
Yeah, uh, it's, it's still in flux, of course, because we're at such a high level, you know, planning level set of, of, of concepts at this point, um, and so I'm carrying some pretty heavy contingencies in there, but I think we're somewhere in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $600,000 for construction.
So our corp- our corporate donors can help on that, right?
Uh, well, yeah, there's still a, a, a healthy number of corporate partners that have expressed interest in donating, but have not came back to us with a number they have in mind. So I have every confidence that the, uh, the roughly $260,000 we have committed today, that that number will grow, and I, I think it will grow significantly. Um, I don't think there's another $250,000 donor out there, um, but there's, there's maybe some other smaller donors that have, have expressed interest, just have not came back to us, um, with, with a number. And I'm not saying they've not replied, they have replied, yes, they want to support it, they're reviewing this with their, with their executive teams at what level, uh, so...
Oh, okay.
We're hopeful. And one of those is even a company that isn't even in town, is moving to town, has expressed interest that they heard what we're doing here and would like to support it, so...
So Kevin, I know you probably, I know you can't reveal much, but, um, would some of these additional, uh, pre-bid and procurement costs be from some of the requests from these donors, or things that they'd like to see?
There's, there's definitely some coordination that we have to do. When you have, when you have that level of a sponsor, you know, coming alongside you, it's more than just putting a logo on a sign somewhere.
Right, right.
You know, they're, they're going to want a, a bit of a stake in how things go together.
I think it'd be foolish to not spend 10 grand to get a quarter million, so...
Yeah.
Um, okay, very good. And then I would also like to say that, you know, there might be the opportunity in the construction administration services, if you don't have that inspector position filled, to have like a, a rider position, basically, where you can get some efficiency out of that cost, as you well know.
Sure.
Uh, construction, a lot of construction administration firms will do a little bit of inspection on the side, and as small of a scope as I imagine this would be for inspection specifically.
Exactly.
I would think that we could get some efficiency there, so...
And, you know, some of the partners that we've also talked to are, are consulting firms that have said, "Would you be interested in in-kind level donations?" So whether those could be construction administration services, or construction inspection, uh, design level services permitting, you know, those are things that, those are conversations that we're also having as well, so...
Okay.
Um, not to mention, you know, we, we do carry a, a pretty healthy budget, a, a line item in the engineering budget for ongoing, just general consulting services. We also have consulting services in our street department budget, uh, so some of those could be used as we get further into the year and understand what our year looks like to help with the, the fray, uh, construction inspection costs, so that they wouldn't necessarily have to be included in any future appropriations.
Okay.
Kevin, uh, when you started this, was the initial amount under $300,000?
I believe it was, I believe that's the number I told you was in that 250 to 300.
Has the scope changed that much that now it's between 500,000 and 600,000?
Well, yes, the, the scope has grown a little bit, we've also grown the scope a bit because of things like, uh, the wet, or not the wetlands, excuse me, the delineation of the landfill. Uh, we've had good conversations with, with IDEM, uh, that are more formalized now and understanding the scope that they're going to be, that they're going to involve. I think other things that maybe were overlooked early on was the, the design and construction of an entrance onto a federal highway, you know, that's not the same as just building a, an entrance, you know, on a local city street. So there's some additional costs there that really are, are only there because of the complexities of dealing with the, with the highway department and stuff like that.
So you got to put D lane, all that stuff in there?
Exactly. Yeah.
Well, and, and also the size of the parking lot was something we looked at too, because of the NICA standards that, I mean, how big's the parking lot, right?
Yeah, you know, that, that's exactly where we're going with this too. When we, when we bring in NICA, who wants to host, you know, regional and statewide events here, um, you know, we, we have to have some permanent parking to handle the day-to-day operations, but we also need to figure in parking for what happens when, you know, in a few years, and they're up and running at full speed in the state of Indiana, and, you know, they have a quarterly event out there that brings in... you know, they have a quarterly event out there that brings in 1,000 people, you know, so that's where some of the scope. The, the scope of the riding features really hasn't changed, the scope of all the needs, the infrastructure needs that the park would have is what's, what's grown.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions for him.
Sure.
Obviously, our friends that I don't care for too well, IDEM. I don't want to, I don't want the word, I want something in writing.
Sure.
Until that gets done, why are we going anywhere else?
Well, I, I can't...
I mean, I don't understand why we're moving forward until we got their approval, period.
I can't get an approval in writing, I mean, I've got our meeting minutes that they've approved, that's the closest thing I can get you. I can't give you a permit without filing construction plans. So all I can tell you is, we've had, we've had a really good meeting with them, they've told us exactly what they're going to want to see from a permit set when we file it. They are, you know, full thumbs up and green lights to doing something like this, they want to encourage this type of reuse, but in terms of getting a permit in hand, I can't do it without construction documents.
Have you got something from, can you, or can you get something from IDEM that, that approves these sort of uses on that type of, you know, a dump fill site like that?
Mm-hmm.
Can you, can you get, surely they got a document or something?
Sure, yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think I've distributed those documents before, the...
You might have.
The closed landfill, I might be not getting the terminology fully right, but they've got a full set of design procedures for permitted reuses of closed landfill facilities as active use recreation areas, so that's a state-level document that, that outlines what's required.
You can't, you can't do anything until you go for the permit.
I, unfortunately, I can't, they're, they're not going to go...
It's a go or not go at that point.
Right, they're not going to give us anything in writing until that point. You know, I, I wish I could get you more of that, I understand that's been requested of me, I, I just, I'm at a loss of getting anything further from them until we file.
We can't, we can't go any farther, we can't bid it until we get the permit.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to point out that Council, Councilman Campbell's opinion of IDEM does not reflect the rest of us, because they're my friends.
Keep in mind, they watch, they pay attention.
I like it.
How much, we spent a half a million dollars on something that we didn't have to spend five cents on.
Yeah.
They found zero, I mean, found nothing.
Right.
So, I don't understand why they think they have it all, they have the power, I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
But at the same time, just because they have the power, they don't have to abuse everybody with it.
Understood.
I made, Mia did help me get some numbers on food and beverage, okay? Of course, we have, we budgeted $500,000, our charity giving amount is $15,000, brings us to $485,000. Our pack, park impact fee, we've approved, we've got $36,000 committed there, so non-committed right now that we were pretty sure of is about $449,000.
I'll take it.
That's not the ask tonight, though, Kevin.
I just have kind of another question really quick before we move forward. So, I know you're saying we have to file the permits, so I just want to know, at what point is that the stopping point? So we pay somebody to draw up the plans to, and draw, we pay someone to draw up the plans, and then we get people to bid, and then you file for the permit?
No, 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 we would, we would draw up the plans, we would then file for, for permits.
Okay.
We would need those permits in hand before we actually, well, in my opinion, we need permits in hand before we actually issue bidding documents, you know, that's just, that's just appropriate and responsible for us, that we would have it permitted before we ask contractors.
So, potentially, we're looking at, how much, how much typically does it cost when we go into the next phase? Because I'm like, how much money possibly could we be in it before, if, if we get to that point, and IDEM says, it's going to be $300,000 extra thousand dollars to come in and bring this dirt to fill this, you need vending, you need blah, 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 like, you know what I mean? Is there like a...
What's the stopping point?
Yeah, the stopping point?
Yeah.
Where we can stop and identify what money we have into it, and then going forward, how much more money would need to be put into it? Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me see, I don't have that directly broken out, but I believe, yes, the onsite construction And then another, it's like another $2,000. So we're probably talking about, well, I maybe want to, some time to make sure I review those numbers, but yeah, it looks like...
Is it fair to say if we funded this tonight, we would essentially be at a point, if not maybe, there would be funds to do more work past that if we needed to, but it would get us to, there wouldn't be another ask before that point to where we, we need to build it? This will get us to that construction point?
And certainly, we wouldn't spend any money that we don't have to.
Right.
You know, we would, this would allow us to authorize the, the final, the next phases of the contract, the final phases of the contract, and we would move forward, but we would not work ahead, and there would be no expense associated with those construction management-related issues...
Okay.
Until we get to that point, so, you know, so if we got to permitting and were unsuccessful, well then, you know, we wouldn't spend all of the $34,000 that I'm asking for, it would just, it would be appropriated, but if not spent, then it would revert back into, into the fund, if I, I believe that's correct, Mia, so...
That makes me feel better, I didn't know, you know, where the...
Well, you would try, you would try to, to fix the plans, to, to, to reapply for a permit again.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we'd figure out what the issue was.
Sure.
Yeah, for sure.
But...
That answered my question, thank you.
Yeah, if we start digging the undercover nuclear reactor, we didn't know it was there, right? You know, okay, we're done, right? We'll stop, but I mean, we're not expecting that, but I'm just...
That's one of the things that IDEM has basically said, is they want us to go out and do some test digging, to understand the, the limits, the delineation of where the landfill is located, you know, so that, that's, we have an on-call services agreement in place with an environmental firm that's working on that. I can't tell you today that the $16,000 that we've authorized for that, whether that will cover all those expenses, but we're hopeful that we would get close to that and not have any additional environmental engineering expenses.
It just worried, because we went from $300,000 to possibly $600,000.
Correct.
And I know not all of it was issues with delineation and stuff like that...
Yeah.
Because we were talking about parking lots, but that is a, almost, could be doubled.
Right.
So...
Yeah, and really, I'd go back to, you know, a lot of this is because of the, some of those coordinations for what the facility could be, you know, but if we were still just building the original trail that we wanted to build, and, you know, a gravel parking lot to accommodate that, you know, we're, we're still talking in that 250 to 350 range, it's, it's just when we start adding in commercial driveways, restroom facilities, the additional parking that we need to build, that, that this, the project is growing.
We're accommodating the excitement.
Right, absolutely. I'm not trying to say I'm not, not for it, I'm just trying to get all my, checking all my boxes.
It's a valid question, valid question. We, we, I like to run things a little tighter than that myself, I'm not, you know, not, we typically wouldn't want to see a project double in, in budget as we go through.
Well, you don't want to turn away excitement, though.
No, it's been a lot of excitement.
And at the end of the day, right, if we determine that we can't build it to the, with the paved parking lot, things like that, because it's out of our reach, then we cross that bridge, right?
Right.
I mean, it's better to design it in, to its finished state, and then if we need to cut back, we can cut back, right? That's how we always operate, so...
That would be true, too, I mean, there are things that we could do to phase construction as we went through, and we typically always build our bidding documents in that fashion, where, you know, there are, there are, there are design alternates that we bid into there so that we can control cost, we can look at options, you know, I think we had four or five alternates on the park restroom building in and of itself, so that we could look at those different prices. When we did the downtown contract, you know, there were, there were large add alternates and deduction alternates that we priced as well, so that we could right-size the project, you know, because really, at the end of the day, when you open a bid package and you've got funding appropriated for, for what you think it's going to be, it's a real problem if you can't afford it, you know, so it's better to have those options to say, oh, it came in too high, but we can, we can take a couple of these alternates off the table and get this back into a budget, as opposed to rebidding something because you put too much into the design package.
Well, and so I consider, too, I hope our council's considering is that we already have a, you know, essentially a quarter of a million dollar pledge to this park, right? So that's a huge...
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I think there's a lot of excitement for it, right? So I think if, if we can keep moving this forward, and, you know, I don't think we've reached a point where we need to stop yet, right? But if we can figure out a way to make it happen, I think we should keep pushing, I mean, since at this point, right, we're, we're getting a huge discount on it either way, right? So it's...
And keep in mind, I mean, as things go, $34,000 to generate a bid package, I, I think we spent $600,000 to generate the bid package for downtown.
Mm-hmm.
This is, relatively speaking, this is a pretty inexpensive design fee.
It's just moving dirt.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just a little... I figured you'd just find a construction inspector that rides mountain bikes, right? He should go out and inspect the trails he's going, right?
That's a great idea.
I'd make a suggestion on the parking lots.
Yeah.
That you consider, I know this is little added expense, but it'd save in the lifetime of the parking lot, if you consider putting a GeoGrid or a fabric on the bottom. It would save so much in the parking lot, maintenance.
Yeah.
If you consider that.
Definitely.
Any other discussion concerning this funding request?
No, sir.
Would entertain a motion, further discussion, motion to table, what's counsel want to do?
I'll make a motion that we approve $34,000, I'll make it an even number for, for counting purposes, $34,600 for, from food and beverage for the move forward on the bike, on the bike park.
Okay, we have a motion for $34,600 preparation for the construction documentation. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that is approved. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
That concludes what I have for any business, and anything from council?
Yes, I got a question for Kevin and John.
[laughing]
I was out at, I was taking a tour of the conservation club over the weekend, showing a friend of mine where the dog park was, and I saw some nice doggies out there playing around in the dog park. I'm assuming the dirt out there in the parking lot in the back came from the road?
No, that, that dirt all came from the restroom project, and because we were trying to get the project done earlier than the April, or the June, or July deadline, they can dump it there, they will be picking it up, load it at time, they'll be moving it out. We'll get it out this spring.
Can they use it at bike, bike area?
We'll, we'll use it at a different place, now, that is pretty well spoken for from the contractor, I'm sure he wouldn't mind doing it, some of it has gravel in it.
I know it's got stuff in it, I know it's got stuff.
Some of it's real good dirt that we are keeping.
I just thought some of it might be good out there on the dump out there, so... Okay, I just thought it came from the road, because the road seemed pretty wide.
That was just a temporary, temporary thing.
Going back in there, it looks pretty nice.
Yeah.
The road contract required them to take everything with them.
Yeah, okay, all right.
That's all in one, here it goes.
Good, thanks.
Looks good, looks good out there.
Mike?
Just a reminder for everybody that the Quanis Pancake Supper will be April the 16th at the Boone County 4-H Grounds.
From 3:00 to 8:00 o'clock.
Thank you, Mike. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to claims, would entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Motion, we pay the claims.
We have motion to pay the claims, is there a second? Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, claims are approved, and would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion, we adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, stay here all night. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we are adjourned, our next city council meeting will be March 23rd at 7:15 PM. Thanks for watching.